Good evening and welcome to the Monday, March 27, 2023 regularly scheduled school board meeting for the Mill Creek Township. School District Board of Directors. Tonight, we are meeting at the Mill Creek Education Center, and even though the public is now able to attend in person, we will continue to stream the meetings live on YouTube and all of the meetings will be recorded for future viewing. You can also view this evening's agenda as well as several additional informational items on our website, www.mtsd.org. Agendas are posted online 48 hours prior to the advertised meeting as well as being physically posted. Forty-eight to seventy-two hours prior to the advertised meeting in the display case posted on the exterior of the Mill Creek Education Center. In addition, please visit us and like us on our Facebook page, Mill Creek Township School District. Also, I'd like to remind all speakers, core team members, and board members to speak clearly and distinctly into their microphone. So you can be heard by all of our attendees this evening, whether they are here in person or viewing us on YouTube. For the audience in attendance this evening reviewing the meeting via Zoom or YouTube, Dr. Roberts Zin Hershey this evening as he is presenting at a conference and will be participating in this meeting virtually via Zoom. Thank you. Mrs. Sirica, roll call, please.
Mr. Dean.
Here.
Ms. Philbeck.
Here.
Mr. Kobelka.
Here.
Mr. Lindner.
Here.
Ms. Lupacek.
Here.
Ms. McClintock.
Here.
Thank you. 1.02, an executive session announcement. An executive session was held March 27, 2023 for the purposes of personnel and safety. 1.03 approval of the agenda. May I have a approval motion for the approval of the agenda?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, motion passes. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Item 1.05, this evening's celebration is the Asbury ambassadors. Mr. Stark.
Good evening, everybody. First off, let me say thank you for giving us the opportunity tonight to be with you as we highlight some amazing students and staff that we have at Asbury. As I stand before you tonight, I'm full of pride, but I must also say I have a heavy heart. I want to say my thoughts and prayers go out to those families and students in Tennessee as we should never have to worry about sending our students to school. But tonight, we have an opportunity to celebrate selfless acts of kindness and generosity. As a principal at Asbury, I'm only as good as the students, staff, and teachers I get to work with every day. So I take this opportunity to thank the parents who are here tonight for giving us the opportunity to educate and interact with their amazing children every day. I now want to turn the program over to our ambassadors and Harper Shearing. Thank you for out here.
Oh, hi. My name is Harper Shearing, and the best thing about being an ambassador is we play a special role in our school's community. We are the ones who soar and are a role model for all the other students. We also help promoting all the special activities that we have done this year such as Alex's Lemonade Stand, food drive, and upcoming events like the end of the year car wash to raise money. My favorite activity we have done this year is Child's Grief Awareness Day. This is where we celebrate hope and acknowledge that it is okay for kids and adults to feel sad sometimes. We have helped raise money for The Caring Place. It made me feel really happy helping kids who are my age who are sad get happy. I really love the opportunities we have as an ambassador.
Hi, my name is Ben, and I'm an Asbury ambassador. One of my favorite things that the ambassadors have done this year so far is Child Grief Awareness Day where we raise money for The Caring Place. The Caring Place deals with people who are grieving, and that's a serious subject. And I feel like we really brought awareness to the school. And I also, the mascot for The Caring Place is a blue butterfly. I may or may not have dressed up as a giant blue butterfly and flown throughout the school.
Hi, I'm Violetta Paris, and I'm an Asbury ambassador. One of my favorite things that we've done this year as ambassadors is the SOAR assembly because it was really exciting and there was a lot of thrill in the room when we were picking the recipients.
Just to highlight why there was a bunch of thrill, we have a, what's that thing called? The money pit, the cash cube, the kids got to go in there and collect brag tags.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Grassy, and I'm an ambassador at Asbury Elementary. Being an ambassador means that you get to do great things and have a lot of fun. One of my favorite projects that we did at Asbury was the Candygrams event. We got to sell candy grams, and you had to write a nice little message to other friends in your school.
Hi, my name is Logan Davidson, and I'm an ambassador at Asbury. What I like about being an ambassador is that I get to be a great role model for other students. My favorite project was the Candygrams because we got to encourage kindness and benefit the Asbury Giving Tree. I think that being an ambassador was a great opportunity to show my love for the Asbury community.
Hi, my name is Nora McGorian. My favorite thing about being an ambassador is working with my friends and improving my school. My favorite event was Alex's Lemonade Stand. I loved helping kids with cancer.
Hello, my name is Landon Hosford. My favorite project as an Asbury ambassador was Candygrams because we got to help raise money for the Giving Tree.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. These ambassadors are a tribute to their families, school districts, and the Mill Creek community. So thank you for leading the effort and thank all of you for doing what you do each and every day. Thank you. Mr. Stark, what does it take to become an ambassador?
Lots of snacks for the principal. No, they have to fill an application. Those applications are reviewed by their teachers and other staff members to select a small group. What do we have, 20?
Twenty ambassadors total, fourteen.
So we tend to pick around 20 every year, and that depends on who applies and the quality of the application.
Great program. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. That's great. Moving on, item two, 2.01 is for the special. Oh, you guys don't have to leave. You can say first. Really, you're enjoying it. Okay. Oh, okay, but we'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Attorney Senator, are we permitted to accept these gifts?
The minutes, the minutes of value.
They have no value.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Call out the name, we'll raise our hand.
Right here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
There we go.
Nice job, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Very nice.
Moving on to minutes, 2.01, special school board meeting minutes of February 23, 2023. 2.02 is school board meeting minutes of February 27, 2023. And 2.03 committee of the whole meeting minutes of March 13, 2023. Can I have a motion to approve 2.01, 2.02, and 2.03?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, motion passes. Item three, we have visitors. We have two speakers have signed up for five minutes this evening. So the first speaker would be Chris Huber from the Mill Creek Education Foundation. Chris, you have five minutes.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to share information about the Mill Creek Education Foundation and our work to provide for Mill Creek students. The MEF scholarship application is now closed. Recipients will be notified on or before graduation. A special thank you to Jen Gilroy, the College Connections Advisor at McDowell for assisting students with the application and encouraging students to apply. Friends and family of Marty Kaverman recently raised more than $18,000 for the MEF Marty Kaverman Memorial Scholarship Fund at their recent event. Criteria for the scholarship is being established, and eligible McDowell seniors will be able to apply in 2024. Former McDowell High School principal and 39-year Mill Creek Township School District educator and football basketball coach Louis Lu-Penna recently passed away, and his family has established a scholarship. Donations to this fund and any of the MEF scholarship funds may be given on our website on the ways to give page. Contribute to an existing scholarship fund dropdown menu. The final MEF grant applications of the 22-23 school year are due this Saturday, April 1st. Special thank you to former MEF trustee Janine Mattern for holding her fifth personal Facebook birthday fundraiser benefiting MEF. The Popluck fundraiser will be held throughout the month of April. Excuse me, and deliveries to MTSD schools and offices will be during teacher and staff appreciation week, May 8 through the 12th. The cost will be $5 per bag. You can make the purchases on our website beginning April 1st or by contacting the MEF office via email or calling. This year's flavors are Trojan Tribute, which is a birthday cake flavor, Fourth Quarter Heat, which is candied honey carbonara, the end-of-year Trojan Treat, which is Princess cinnamon, which was the favorite last year, and Mill Creek Mac, which is cheddar cheese. Please consider purchasing popcorn for district teachers and staff or for their break room in their buildings. Proceeds from this fundraiser support MEF grants for teachers and staff each year. The MEF 27th Annual Golf Tournament will be held Monday, June 12 at Whispering Woods Golf Club. We're excited to experience their new clubhouse. The MEF Championship Cup is up for grabs again, so put together your foursome and see if you can pull off a win against last year's champs. Registration is now open on our website. Mill Creek and McDowell High School alumni, many of the milestone reunions are scheduled or being planned for this year. Please let MEF know of your event and check out our alumni page to find out if your reunion is scheduled. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Chris. Always good information to be shared with the community. Appreciate that. Next five-minute speaker to speak is Mr. Aliotta. Five minutes.
Good evening, board, administration, students, parents, and taxpayers. Please pardon my voice. I have a little laryngitis. Please pardon my voice. I have a little laryngitis. Some attendees probably saying, "Why did you come tonight?" My original topics include the following. These issues may be for future litigation, which my attorneys are presently addressing. Number one, First Amendment, freedom of speech and its application to public school code and board policies at board meetings and other public entities. Two, conflicts of interest by elected and appointed public officials and PACs within law firms and private entities. Campaign finance laws as it applies to board policy and supporting candidates by PACs of the law firms. Board Director Jason Dean received a cash five thousand dollars from a shareholder of the Knox Law Firm as a Christmas gift documented. Violations of law, Sunshine Act, legal consequences. Surcharge Act law as it applies to both elected and appointed public officials and imposition of personal liability. Damage to the citizens, taxpayers of our constitutional laws and rights governing public speech at public meetings. Recourse of victims. Licensed attorneys, oath of office, professional duties, responsibilities as officers of the court. Responsibilities as public officials, reporting violations of law. You are familiar with my quotes. Here's one of a personal, unpersonal basis. "They assassinated my character. Then they investigated me not once but twice. Then they silenced me by censuring me. Then they removed me from Operations and Financial Committee. Then they counterclaimed and sued me in a defamation lawsuit. Then they lost." Some people will never like me because my spirit irritates their demons. Never allow anyone to get comfortable disrespecting you. To every past and present school board director, with the exception of Board Director Mike Kobilka. Two superintendents, one solicitor, one contracted attorney paid by the district with board votes for approval to use taxpayer public funds illegally from December two thousand and fifteen to the present time. Yes, eight years. Your time has come to report to the public in your violations of your oath of office. You will report to the public how much taxpayer funds you illegally approved and expended. You will report to the public under oath what you did for five-plus years in a weaponized assault against Lou Aliotta. You will report to the public the use of attorney-client privilege used in illegal actions for five-plus years. You will report to the public how the use of attorney-client privilege is used during violations of law. You will report to the public how your attorney's so-called legal opinion advice is legal or illegal, especially those two school board directors who are licensed to practice law in PA. The public education system is also weaponized. As I have stated before, sometimes there are bad actors with gigantic egos. Some are narcissists in a great profession called law. How many public officials violate the public trust? The dynasties and empires, as in law firms, may rule for a period of time. But time, they too will be exposed and die off allowing true sense of our constitutional republic to flourish. Do you have the courage to be free? Thank you for the opportunity to exercise my freedom of speech at this public meeting.
Uh, Mr. Dean, would you like to make a, a, a comment in response to Mr. Aliotta before he walks out? Mr. Aliotta? Mr. Aliotta? No, you left the meeting. But for the public record, you'd like to?
For the public record, my father-in-law is, I think he's seventy-eight, retired from Knox Law Firm for, uh, probably thirteen or fourteen years. And I disclosed on my financial disclosure, uh, over-disclosed, um, and put that on there maybe four or five years ago. So retired from the Knox firm many years ago. And I'll remind you, the Knox firm has been associated with Mill Creek Township School District for forty years. I know what you're thinking. Forty years ago, I was ten, eleven years old. I'm fifty. So long before Jason Dean came along, Knox was associated with Mill Creek Township. Thank you.
Any other speakers, Miss Sitter?
No.
Last call. Any speakers online who'd like to speak? Okay, moving on, old business. Item four point zero one, step door discussion. Mr. Gallagher, can you give us an update, please?
At the last meeting, uh, I promised that I'd bring, uh, the, uh, resolution. There are some pictures of the nine doors that we discussed before. So, uh, I don't know. But we did, uh, paint the steps, uh, as discussed, and then we also adhered the stickers to the inside and outside of each door. Um, and then the plan is we will do that for the remaining one hundred and eighteen doors over the course of the next couple of months. So I just wanted to bring that up. I'm hoping that's acceptable. Um, hopefully everybody got to look at the pictures, um, and please let me know.
Can you bring those pictures up? Oh, you don't have the pictures. Okay, you said them out early.
The board doc.
The board doc. Okay, gotcha. Okay. So the nine identified high-traffic entry points have been painted in stickers and remaining one hundred and eighteen doors will be addressed as soon as possible, but no later than August the first of twenty twenty-three. Yes. Any questions from the board?
No, thank you for taking care of that so quickly.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, man. Item five, Instruction in Student Services. Mrs. Winchell.
Thank you. There are five items under this heading this evening, and all five of those went through committee a few weeks ago. Just to review those, um, five point zero one is the N A S S P Trailblazing Leadership Weekend. That is for Sandy Means, who won the state twenty twenty-three Assistant Principal of the Year Award. And she is invited to attend this workshop, April twenty-four through twenty-five in Washington, DC, and there's no cost to the district. Item five point zero two is the Broadway Teachers Workshop. We are looking for approval to send one staff member to attend the Broadway Teachers Workshop in New York City. And that takes place, uh, July ten through fourteen of this year, uh, at a cost of two thousand, two hundred, thirty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. Item five point zero three is the Penn State University Dual-Credit Affiliation Agreement. Uh, Dr. Kavanaugh spoke about that at the committee meeting, um, two weeks ago. Five point zero four is the McDowell Speech and Debate Tournament of Champions. Um, we have a group going to the University of Kentucky in Lexington, Kentucky, April fifteen through seventeen. And that is funded totally through fundraising donations. The only cost to the district is the cost of the subs for the chaperone teachers for that day. And the last item is five point zero five, which is the Special Education, um, Plan for Twenty-two, Twenty-three. It's a three-year plan. It's been on public display for the past thirty days. And we are, um, asking to have that approved this evening. So I'd like to make a motion for items five point zero one through five point zero five, um, to go forward, um, for approval. Second.
Any, we have a motion, Ravis. Second, any discussion?
Yes, Ms. Winchell, can you pull five point oh three and have that separately?
I'm sorry.
Can you pull five point oh three of door accreditation? I will need to abstain on that item.
Okay.
So I'd like. Vote on it separately.
Okay, so, um, right now we are voting on five point oh one, oh two, oh four, and oh five.
Okay, so put.
I'd like, okay.
Okay, uh, any other discussion? So this is to, uh, approve, uh, five oh one, two, four, and five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, motion passes.
Okay, now I'd like to make a motion for five point zero three.
You have a second?
To bring that forward. Second.
Any discussion on that? Okay, uh, we're gonna go quick real quick.
Lupacek? Yes. Ms. McPlentik?
Yes.
Mrs. Newsom?
Yes.
Mr. Winchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Winchell?
Yes.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Philbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kobilka?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindner?
Abstain.
Just four. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Winchell.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item six, Personnel and Policy Committee. Mr. Dean?
Thank you, President Winchell. We have, uh, four items on Personnel and Policy Agenda this evening. Um, I'm gonna take these in two blocks. Item six point zero one, IU thirteen agreement for Act one sixty-eight software solution. Item six point zero two, Coordinator of School Safety Job Description. Six point zero three, Erie Institute of Technology externship agreement. I make a motion we pass, uh, that we approve six point zero one, so six point zero three.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, motion passes.
Personnel report for March twenty twenty-three. We had a few deltas from the previous. I'll go through those. Uh, Bell Valley, we had a change of status. Special Education Assistant, Learning Support, the Title One Educational Assistant, McDowell to Bell Valley. Chestnut Hill, we had a change of status for a Child Development Group Supervisor to Title One Educational Assistant. At Tracy, we had a change of, uh, hired start date for Staff Nurse. Uh, we had an update on the Special Education Assistant Autistic Support from Tier One to Step One. We have a recommendation for Educational Assistant. Moving on to Walnut Creek, we have a resignation of a Staff Nurse. McDowell Intermediate, we have a resignation of a J-one second shift full-time custodian. At the M E C, we have a resignation of a Technology Manager. Uh, we have a rescinded offer of a Benefits Coordinator. Uh, we have a recommendation for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three Child Development Substitute, Child Development Assistant Group Supervisor, uh, Child Development Pre-K Assistant, Child Development Group Supervisor, Child Development Pre-K Teacher. We have some additions for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three Board Approved Volunteers, three. We have an Employment Engagement Coordinator. And some first student activity. We have new hires. And continuing, we have a change of the Elementary Grade Two Teacher to Supervisor of E L A slash S S Grandview to M E C. And that are the, those are the additions for the personnel report. Like to make a motion, we approve the personnel report as reviewed.
Got a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, motion passes. Item seven, Enclosed Reports. Mr. O'Toole?
Thank you. Um, seven point oh one to seven point oh three is the Enrollment Summary, the Investment Summary, and, uh, the, uh, Federal Funding Report. Those are informational items. Are there any questions in regards to either one of those three? Hearing none, uh, I move forward. I would ask the board as a, take these as a block of seven point oh four. It's a student activity accounts for the month, uh, seven point oh five budget transfers. And I'll stop there at seven point oh four and seven point oh five.
Come a motion to approve seven point zero four and seven point zero five?
Motion.
Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, motion passes.
Seven point oh six is, uh, bond money, uh, that relates to how we're spending in the change orders for all the renovations. And, uh, there are a few change orders in here, as I have noted, with one being related to the baseball softball field project for which, uh, we wanted to provide a little bit of clarification regarding.
Yeah, so, uh, the one we're talking about is the one from Playing Surface Solutions. Um, as you can see, there's quite a bit of money deduct and adds that went on and as part of this, uh, this change order. So basically what happened was, uh, if we recall our original design, we were gonna keep the dugouts. Um, that was part of the study that we would save some money by leaving the existing dugouts. Well, what that did is that ended up, uh, fixing, uh, the grade that we were calling for the field. Uh, and with all the dirt moving with the different, uh, slopes between left field and right field and center field and home plate, there was quite a bit of dirt that had to get, uh, moved in order to make that happen. So we bid it that way. Uh, Playing Surface Solutions came back and they said, "Look, with the amount of soil that we are moving, instead of moving that soil, we can change the design. Uh, the designed, uh, elevation will actually be two, two feet higher. We won't have to move all of that dirt and essentially we get new dugouts instead." Um, so that's, that's the high level. That's the big dollar amount. That's the one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So that's how much we're saving. Uh, well, you reduce that by the thirty-five thousand that they do still need to, uh, provide. Um, but it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars that we saved by not, uh, keeping the dugouts, uh, moving the field two feet higher than the design. Um. So with that being said, then there were some other things that they went through, um, that they found as part of the design. And I'll, I'll just say this, uh, Chris Coughlin and, uh, Mike Sanford, who did the design, um, you know, they don't do these fields all the time. Playing Surface Solutions has done hundreds of these. Uh, so this, this is sort of a product of their knowledge, knowing what to do, um, to save some money here and there and give us more, uh, for what our, you know, make our money go further. Um, so there's some other miscellaneous things that are listed here, um, eight-inch field drains. He reduced the amount of underground, uh, drainage. Um, but that will not affect the field draining. Uh, at the end of the day, this is just, uh, the pipes that actually get the water to the storage tanks, uh, that are required by D E P. Um, so we should have no reduction in performance. Uh, we are working with Chris Coughlin and, uh, Mike Sanford to make sure that they approve of all of the changes, um, so that we're covered and they feel good about the design as well. Uh, I will tell you, uh, Troy, uh, he's the individual who's the project manager for Playing Surface Solutions. He put a lot of effort into giving us a better product. I, I really believe that. And, uh, he did a full three-D rendering of the site. Him and I walked through all of the changes that are being made. Um, so I, I commend him on all of the hard work that he really didn't have to do. Um. So with that, I, does anybody have any questions? I know it's a, it's a lot. And in the end, it nets out to, we owe them, uh, six thousand, nine hundred, eighty-two dollars as a change order, uh, in order to make all of these changes. Um, you can see the deducts. You can see the adds. Uh, like I said, we do get new dugouts. I did approve those dugouts with our baseball and softball user groups. Um, we're actually sort of copying, um, they're doing, uh, dugouts at Allegheny College right now. Um, and so they had a design for that that we provided to that user group, uh, and everybody liked those. We actually, the dugouts will actually get larger than they currently are today. Um, I think by twelve or fifteen feet for both sets. Um. So, any questions?
Well, let's get a, a motion in a second and we have discussion. That's, we have a motion to accept seven point oh six bond money summary, which includes these change orders. Come a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, now discussion. I, I have one question, Mike, on that, on the dugouts, 'cause I remember, uh, when we were originally talking, some of the players, I think I went down there, talking about the dugouts and how bad that third base side is with the sun in that. So with that, I know the sun's a sun and height and everything, but is there a design to kind of block some of that sun going into the dugout?
So I don't know that it'll block the sun more. I do know the dugouts are getting wider, which will help.
Okay.
Obviously getting longer.
Gotcha.
And then they're actually shifting them where it'll be a better view towards the actual plate.
Okay, I got you.
A lot of, a lot of detail went into making sure that what we're getting is worthwhile.
Okay, thank you.
Remember some discussion when we were talking about the dugouts, about the fact that it is more common for the visitors dugout. the visitors dugout to be at one particular base?
First base.
Are we backwards and continuing to be backwards?
We actually, that's a great question, we've flopped the softball dugouts. They, they, that was one of their requests. And so softball is actually going to get a larger storage area because they don't have a large storage area now. So as part of this, they'll actually get a storage that'll be built into the dugout with the door. And we flop that accordingly to address that concern, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does anything in this change the timeline?
No. Nope.
Mike, does that extra two feet of soil have any impact on the drainage, either positive or negative?
No. Actually, well, I'll say this, it'll, it'll be positive because the field will actually sit higher. So if you think about then coming down the hill from the softball field to the baseball field, it helps us with the ADA compliance of the path coming down. And then actually we'll get a, a better swell in the outfield, so, or beyond the outfield, beyond that fence there. The other big change that they made was, because you'll see there's a reduction in synthetic turf. So what's happening there is the architect put sixty feet from the backstop to home plate, which is a little excessive. And so that got moved back to forty five feet, we're currently thirty two feet today. So we still get a little bit more room, which meets compliance with high school baseball. But then we got that reduction in twelve feet, which helps us in the outfield with the swell and everything else. So we got a reduction in price there that then helped us pay for the, for the dugouts as well. So there was a lot of, there's a lot of, like I said, they, they put a lot of time into really thinking through every piece of this before they came back with this number. So I there's a lot of details in here.
Mike, what is the timeframe again, just for review?
Oh yeah, so we're going to break ground the first week in June, there to be done by November.
So are we going to have the, obviously when we have a deduct and an add change order of this scope, there's always a concern for schedule values. Is Coughlin and Associates, are they going to look at the schedule values and say whether or not these numbers are justifiable? Because that is always the biggest concern when you're dealing with change orders, how are you actually getting true value?
I can ask them to do that, review it, I think they owe us that, so, yes, I can ask them that.
And obviously drainage is probably the most paramount important issue of the baseball field. We need to, we need commitment that this drainage plan is acceptable and will meet our standards for a playing surface. We cannot put back a field that is going to suffer from drainage issues.
Yeah, I'm, I'm confident in that, we're not changing anything underground and with the amount of water retention that D E P and the township are making us do. I have no, no fear of that. So then it's just making sure that the water can get to there, which comes down to your turf and how you actually lay out the piping underneath. Essentially, there's a pipe every ten feet. So as long as you get the water to the pipe and to the, the tanks, you're good and I am very confident in that.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay. That said, we have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? Motion passes. Thanks, Mike.
And then the last two items have asked to take as a block as well as seven point oh seven or as a treasurer summary and seven point oh eight being the financial reports.
Have a motion to accept seven point zero seven and seven point zero eight.
Motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? Motion passes. Item eight, Finance and Operations Committee, Mr. Lindner.
Thank you, President Winchell, we have eight items this evening, all of these items were discussed at committee of the whole meeting earlier this month, I'm going to bring them forward in two block, or excuse me, three blocks, so I sit around, I'm going to bounce a little bit, so I apologize. First block is eight point oh one, refinish the gym floor at Walnut Creek Middle School. That was a contract with J S Wood Floors for twenty nine thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Eight point oh two is the stage curtain upgrade and repairs, this is a district wide bid for hundred and three thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars with Pittsburgh Stage Incorporated. And this is for multiple systems at Chestnut Hill, Walnut Creek, Westlake and M I H S. Eight point oh three is a train service agreement for McDowell Intermediate High School. This is a six year agreement, they did come back and change the annual increase to four and a half percent, so thank you for looking at that and having that conversation. Eight point oh four is a district wide agreement with William T. Spader for water testing. This is a five year contract as well with a four and a half percent increase each of the years to address the H V A C systems, closed looped H V A C systems in each of the buildings. Eight point oh seven is the memorandum of understanding for Act ninety three employees. And eight point oh eight are the accounts payable reports for February, which include February twenty fourth and March tenth payroll. Like to bring those six items forward as a block and I have a motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? Motion passes.
Consider I do, we need a roll call for the Northwest Tri County IU, or is that it? And we'll just do that one by itself. So eight point oh five is the Northwest Tri County intermediate budget for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, I'd like to bring that forward as a motion.
Give a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. O'Toole, how does that affect Mill Creek? The effect of that budget?
Our contribution of the operating costs associated with the IU is a little over two hundred grand. And then all the other programs, I think it's like two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars for the headman out program, which is, we will, the IU actually bills out other districts who are sending students to that alternative program. Well, we also go in a consortium with the entire IU five in terms of getting our way in product services, which is E rate deductible as well. That was roughly forty five thousand dollars and then say roughly about a hundred and eighty grand, I want to say in regarding tentative special ed services, which are expected next year. With that said, all the services outside of that operating cost, they are reconciled to the true use that it would be incurred throughout the course of the year. So for example, if we expected that one student in a specialized program for the entire year, but they were only there six months. That would get reconciled accordingly and we wouldn't pay the full amount as it's projected in the budget.
So year over year increase for us?
I, it was minimal, I, I, from that operating cost, I remember it was roughly two percent.
Yeah.
That could be off a little bit there, but it was nominal.
Understand, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are you good? Well, yeah, why, why don't we do roll call?
Okay.
Mrs. Newsome?
Yes.
Mr. Winchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Winchell?
Yes.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Philbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kobilka?
Yes.
Mr. Lindner?
Yes.
Ms. Lupacek?
Yes.
And Ms. McPlintock?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And the last item for this evening is memorandum of understanding for our classified agreements employees. I'd like to bring that forward as a motion.
Second. Uh, you want? Do you want to change the language?
Would I amend it after it's brought forward and discuss?
Do that.
Give them a chance at least.
Show of emotion, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, I would, I'd like to make an amendment to this agreement. In this agreement, it stipulates that years of experience for a position would be at the discretion of the board. And what I would amend this to say is that years of experience with, with an equivalent position at the recommendation of the H R Director with board approval.
Have a motion to accept that amendment?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now to vote on the motion as amended, have a motion to accept the amended motion. Okay, have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, discussion. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay?
Those are our eight items for this evening.
Moving on, item, thank you, Ms. Lindner. Moving on to item nine Superintendent's Report, Dr. Roberts, any items that you'd like to bring forward?
Sure, certainly, thank you, President Winchell, good evening, Board Committee. There are no agenda items under this evening's Superintendent's Report, but indulge me if I may certainly bring forth a reminder to the Board and Community that on tomorrow we will conclude over third quarter. And I have to say is, as one teacher so aptly put it to me that, as she talked about and aligned this to an N C W A basketball vernacular, this is truly March Madness, we've had our shares of challenges, but there are so many celebrations we've had. We've had a very strong first three quarters to this school year and it truly is a testament to the dedication unbelievable levels of professionalism and skills displayed by all of our teacher staff and school leaders. And so as we wrap up this third quarter, I know there's a significant commitment across the board unanimous, if you may, to come back and finish our fourth quarter in a very strong way. And so to all of our teacher staff and leaders, as you venture off into a much needed and well deserved spring break on next week. Want to continue to encourage you all to take some time to just reflect, reconnect with friends and family and come back refreshed. I know that we truly appreciate, I know the Board, I speak for the Board as well, we truly appreciate your continued dedication and we're excited by what is to come in quarter number four. So thanks to teacher staff and leaders and our students, enjoy spring break.
Hey, thank you. Item ten, new business, any new business? Item eleven, Solicitor Report, turning Senate.
I have no action items tonight.
Okay. Twelve remarks, twelve point zero one Northwest Tri County Intermediate Unit. We had our meeting last week, just a few attachments, if you want to cruise them. There are thirty three pending or in process P A legislative bills of interest focused on education. I just want to highlight the two of them, I guess. One is Senate Bill one fourteen that comes from Representative Brooks down in Crawford Mercer County. It's firefighter training pilot program, the bill creates a pilot program for community colleges and universities in a P A state system of higher ed to give interested high school students training in firefighting. This legislation passed the Senate unanimously in April, was not considered by the full House before the close of the session. That was introduced. The other one is actually kind of a co sponsor, well, one is in the House which is by Ryan Bizarro, our representative, I did talk to Ryan about this. And also the Senate shank, which is cyber charter funding, the bill allows school districts to be exempt from cyber school tuition payments if the school district offers its own cyber classes. And I think I talked to Mr. O'Toole and we spent about three million dollars a year in cyber charter costs. So I did talk to Ron Bizarro and he is sponsoring that to, to move forward with that. Also Representative Bizarro is trying to get the new governor to come to Mill Creek to visit our infastri. So he'll keep us posted on that as well. The other thing from the IU five is that Pennsylvania Education Department launches new careers in education through the career and technical education entities. Pennsylvania Department of Education recently announced that career and technical education entities, including those in school districts and charter schools can apply to create new programs to prepare students for careers in education. So that, that should be also helpful. And the last is a tidbit that Brad Whitman always shares with us. Fast fact, mental behavioral developmental disorders begin in early childhood. One in six U S children ages between, children between the ages of two and eight years old have been diagnosed with mental behavioral or developmental disorder. Those are attachments are on the, on the agenda for your review. Twelve point zero two Erie County Technical School, Mike Lindner.
I have a couple of things this evening with joy and sadness, Joe Tarasovich, the director up at Erie County Tech School has announced his resignation, retirement, it will be effective July first, Joe has been there for a long time and has been a great leader and has stayed on to shepherd through the renovation project. So he is going to be missed, but we also have very exciting news. The Joint Operating Committee in approved Matt LaVerdi to start effective April seventeenth. He's going to have about almost two and a half months to work with Joe, so we'll have a good, smooth transition from one administration to the next administration. Matt is coming to us from the IU six, he was the Assistant Executive Director for the last six years. Prior to that, he was a high school principal for nine years at Valley Grove School District. And he was the head football coach at Oil City over that same period for eight years from two thousand eight to two thousand fifteen. Matt also has a tremendous background in community programs. He is very engaged in the technical and vocational programs down in IU six, it was one of the areas that he specialized in, really pushed into, so we're excited to have him come on board. In addition to that, the renovation project, I did attach an update from this past month as to what's done. We're finally starting to see pods being completed. The school has been an interesting, Joe's been a magician, along with principal there as well and the, I won't leave out Dell, the maintenance facility supervisor. Making sure that the school has been operational through an entire renovation that has been nonstop while the students have been in session for the last year, we should be done in this late December. It'll all be done, but if anyone is interested in coming up, I know Joe, it takes a lot of pride and typically on board meeting nights on Thursdays, we will have a tour typically at four forty five, so if that's something a member would like to do, let me know and we can make sure that Joe's doing that. It is really impressive with what's been renovated so far, the facilities are really high end, they, they meet the needs for where we're going to go vocationally. So it's, it's really impressive and the numbers for the, the school, while we may not see it with Mill Creek's attendance. The school is up significantly this year in enrollment, we are in the mid eighties, which historically has been more closer to seventy five percent of capacity, a lot of programs at full capacity. And we are seeing tremendous interest next year, so it just looks like they're going to be close to being, filling out that whole school just as soon as we finish it up.
Thanks, thanks, Mike, good report. Twelve point zero three Mill Creek's parking wreck, Ms. Newsome?
Nothing since the last meeting.
Okay, twelve point zero four P S B A.
President Winchell, you stole my, my report with the report of new programming coming for H twelve, um, high school students pipeline into teaching career.
Oh, great.
Very exciting, no, no, no apology needed, I was glad you didn't say.
That'd be good. Okay. Twelve point zero five School Board remarks, any school board remarks? I, I'm going.
Was this meeting really under an hour?
Not yet.
I have one quick one, happy spring break, everyone. This week, I'm sure you're looking forward.
Yeah, one thing I'd like to mention to the board members, I know you have invitations that Wednesday is the Municipal Law Symposium sponsored by the Knox firm, a lot of great topics there. You know, school law update, including Title Nine, cancer culture, First Amendment, wine garden, lot of mail guarantee rates, so a lot of good information. I've attended in the past, well worth the, well worth the education that you receive, part of our continuing education also. So thank you, I'm in Knox LaFerr for that.
Thank you for the advertisement.
Yeah. The next meeting of the Mill Creek Township Board of School Directors will be held Wednesday, April twelfth, beginning at six P M. The meetings will include Personnel Policy, Instruction and Student Services, Finance and Operations Committee and Committee of the Whole Meeting. Before I turn over to Dr. Roberts, any other school board remarks? Okay, Dr. Roberts?
Thank you, President Winchell, Mrs. Winchell, the meeting time tonight, as I shared earlier, is really an indication of what an amazing first three quarters we've had. So the board is finishing on a high note in terms of meetings, we can keep this going. As always, I want to start with student celebrations, wow, just tremendous thanks to Principal Starks and Asbury ambassadors who showed up this evening, we are so proud of you, of your commitment to your school and community. Certainly want to share a special thanks to those ambassadors who spoke tonight, Violet, Harper, Ben, Nicholas, Logan, Norma and Landon. The work that you're doing, your commitment around the Alex Lemonade Stand, a cure for childhood cancer, the given tree. And certainly what one that stood out to me this evening is the commitment that you have with regards to Child Grief Awareness Day and your partnership with our, our local organizations. You know, thanks to Harper, our first ambassador who
And your partnership with our local organizations. You know, thanks to Harper, our first ambassador, who really thoughtfully. Articulated the importance for us to. Create more spaces for grief and sadness that has been experienced by both our youth. All of our children as well as our adults. We are seeing that every single day. And I know that there are members of this core team that are working with our school leaders and teachers and buildings. Our counselors to make sure that we are creating those spaces as well for adults. You know, Harper's sharing tonight about the importance for us to. Create space for sadness and grief really aligns to just so much of the present research. And I did share some of this with the board and community before. A study that was published in Clinical Psychological Science really shared that. There has been a troubling development in the lives of US teens. During 2010 and I think 2015, and then it persists today. And that is, you know, during this period of time, the number of teens who felt. Sort of useless and joyless surged an alarming 33%. And what is even more sad about this is that the number of 13 to 18 year olds, students who we're serving. Who committed suicide jumped to 31%. And so our Asbury ambassadors and many of our other student groups are leading the way and reminding us. About the importance for us to keep, continue to recognize. The social emotional well being of our children and equally as important that of our adults. And as superintendent, I'm committed to making sure that I'm supporting. Our core team, so we are creating those spaces for our teachers and staff as well. Second student group, I certainly want to acknowledge and celebrate. I want to celebrate our teacher and speech and debate coach, Will Caraty and his. Group of coaches for their work with our just really storied and wildly successful speech and debate team. The team, they've had a great season, an outstanding showing at the state championship. And now they are getting ready to prepare for the national championship with about 19 debaters. Who received multiple placements at a recent state tournament. They've ranked second in their division, I think, and then fifth overall out of 78 competing teams. So congratulations to coach. And all our students. Finally, I want to bring into the the room today, if I may, a reminder and a little bit of an update for our board and community members. This is with regards to our before and after care program. You may recall that early in February of this year, the district's core team and I brought forth. A recommendation to the board to consider pausing the operation of our before and after care program. This this recommendation was actually anchored in several data points. Including the current and persistent challenges that we face in terms of the labor force and the job market, not being able to adequately staff. The positions to support those programs. Additionally, one important consideration that we had, have always had and will continue to have. Was the potential impact of this recommendation to the board on families and our children. After our own reflections over the last several weeks, we've enlisted the voices of individuals, many of whom have reached out to us, including children. We subsequently came to the board and I asked that the board. Pause or delay their action based on our recommendation. And the board has been incredibly supportive of this. The board has also pushed our thinking and encouraged and inspired us. To try to find a way to support the persons who will be impacted and our community members. I did make a commitment to the community and board to come back to you all at the end of April. With a final recommendation, if you may, at the end of April's meeting. But in the interim, I just want to share with you that we are having a number of conversations with community partners. As we explore possibly viable options to maintain the operation of this program next year. Happy to report that preliminarily, we will maintain the operation of these programs. The how and what it looks like is what we will bring to you at a little bit more detail at our end of month meeting. So thank you all. We certainly crave your indulgence as we continue to work through this process. And know that we remain committed to maintaining the program. So that we're serving each and every one of our parents who are involved and our children. Thank you all for your continued support. And again, as shared earlier, you've had a good first three quarters. We're continuing to work through where there are gaps and I am excited about what is to come for quarter number four. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Moving on to item 13, adjournment. Now have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay?